The city clerk's office or at the white box or any email received will not be read aloud at the council meeting, but it will be circulated to the city council and incorporated into the minute, uh, to the record. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Rojas.
Present.
Councilmember Dear.
Present.
Councilmember Hicks. Mayor Pro Tim Hilton.
Present.
Mayor Davis Holmes.
Present.
Thank you.
Have a flag salute by Councilman Dear, please.
Everyone, please stand if you can stand and put your right hand over your heart. Please place the American flag in the room and repeat with me. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it. Thank you.
We'll have an invocation by Pastor Prentice Lewis of Greater Starlight Baptist Church. And someone had a birthday yesterday. He's a Taurus the Bull like me. Love it. Happy birthday, Pastor.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Davis Holmes, let's, that's, let's pray. We thank you for our city, Carson, and we thank you for our elected officials, for the businesses and the various families and all who represent this wonderful city. Thank you for our council members. We thank you for their desire, Lord, to see the best quality of life in this city. I rejoice in the fact that you allow me to pray. My prayer is that wisdom will reign in this moment. And it's all that's necessary for us to ensure the proper quality of life, that you do it in these moments. And then thank you, Lord, because I believe that you'll do it. Show up in a mighty way today. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor, and happy birthday again. I'm going to move up item number 29. It's a public hearing. Madam City Clerk, was the notice of public posted?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The notice of public hearing has been given pursuant to the applicable law, including but not limited to the proof of timely publication received by me. Notice of the applicant was received via email, and that was confirmed by staff. The agenda posting requirements were met for individuals and organizations. The posting affidavits are on file in the city clerk's office, and we received one written communication in advance of the meeting for this public hearing and a number of comment cards.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'm going to close the public hearing because the recipient, the developer, has requested that this item be continued until the first meeting.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Clerk, City Attorney. I open the public hearing and I'm going to close it because the matter is being continued.
Well, you have to open the public hearing and you continue it to the date that you want to have it, have the meeting.
We're continuing the public hearing on item number 29 until the first meeting in June.
June 4th.
Will be June 4th. So anyone that's here to speak on that item, this item is being continued until our meeting in June. First meeting in June, June 4th. Thank you. Closed session items, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council will meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 to discuss labor negotiations regarding AIM CPSA and ASME Labor 809 and 1017, as well as unclassified management. The council will meet pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 or D3 and E1 because there's a significant exposure to litigation in two cases. The council will meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 to confer with legal counsel in the matter of Watson Land Company versus City of Carson, case number 19STCP0172. The council will not take up item number four, which was to discuss existing litigation in the matter of Cam Carson. That will not be taken up. Lastly, the council will meet in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 to confer with legal counsel in the matter of Paul versus City of Carson Workers Comp, appeal case number ADJ15416145. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, was there anyone wanting to speak on closed session items?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. We're going to recess to close session. We should be back within the hour, no later than 6:10. Recession. Maisha. Maisha Raven. I'm looking for Maisha. Where's Maisha? Uh, I'm looking for.
Oh, hi. This is your Mayor Lula Davis Holmes, and I'm very excited to announce that the Philippine Independence Day Foundation and the City of Carson will be celebrating the 126th Annual Philippine Independence Day Celebration on Saturday, June 8th, 7:30 a.m. at Veterans Park. This year, we're excited to welcome our grand marshal, Apple Diap, multi-Grammy award-winning co-founder of the Black Eyed Peas, entrepreneur and philanthropist. My sincerest thanks and appreciation go to the Philippine Independence Day Foundation, Councilwoman Arlene Rojas, producer and director Ted Bonito, and our hard-working and dedicated city staff and volunteers for organizing this special event. Let's come together and celebrate an enjoyable event. So please save the date, Saturday, June 8th at Veterans Park. I look forward to seeing you there. From your Mayor, Lula Davis Holmes. Good morning. Welcome to Carson, the jewel of the South Bay. Please join me on a special journey as we visit all the places and faces that make Carson shine. As we move through our city, we will talk about the challenges we've met and the victories we've celebrated. Carson is our home, our heart, and our community. There is no place like it. Back in 2020, I accepted not just a role, but a mission to lead Carson to a brighter and stronger future. It wasn't easy, especially with the pandemic and some tough times like the warehouse fire and the Dominguez channel emergency. Our first stop, a very special place. We're about to see Carson from a perspective as dynamic as our community. Here we go. Here we are at the Dignity Health Sports Park. This isn't just the home of the L.A. Galaxy. It's a symbol of Carson's vibrant spirit and global presence where dreams are pursued and victories are delivered. As the 2028 Olympics approach, we will be ready to shine. Together, we will welcome the world, share our story, a city where every step leads to greatness. Speaking of bringing the world to our doorstep, this year Carson had the honor of welcoming none other than Lionel Messi, the world's most celebrated soccer player, to Dignity Health Sports Park. His visit was a proud moment for Carson. It allowed us to showcase our ability to host international icons and unite people through the universal language of sports. Now, join me in welcoming the driving force behind the L.A. Galaxy, President Tom Braun.
The relationship between the L.A. Galaxy, Dino Sports Park, and the City of Carson is so incredible and so important to us. We welcome hundreds of thousands of fans to the City of Carson every single year, and we're so excited to be a part of the community and welcome them every time they come up and come to one of our events.
Before I go any further, I want to thank my family, my husband, Harry Holmes, my children, Keisha and Deshaun, and all my grandchildren, whose love continues to be my guiding light. It is a privilege to serve you as your mayor, and I will never stop working for you. I extend my heartfelt thanks to my colleagues. Mayor Pro Tim, Dr. Jawan Hilton, Councilmember Cedric Hicks, Councilmember Jim Dear, Councilwoman Arlene Rojas, our City Treasurer, Monica Cooper, our City Clerk, Dr. Kalia Bradshaw, our City Attorney, Sunny Saltani, and our executive team and all our city employees who come to work every day to make our city great. Your presence today and every day is a testament to the collaborative spirit that propels this city forward. Today, we come together to reflect upon the progress we've made and look forward to what I plan for you in the future. When I was elected, I made a commitment to improve and enhance our city's infrastructure. I am pleased to report that we've allocated $32 million to improve our streets, our sidewalks, and filling of potholes. This is the first time in the history of the city that we've made such a substantial financial commitment. This project isn't just about today. It's about preparing for tomorrow and the future of every Carson resident. Safety is my number one priority. Today, I'm proud to report that we have implemented over $5 million to a project consisting of high-definition security cameras at all our city parks, and cameras have been installed at all entrances into the city. So if you're coming to Carson and you think you won't be seen, I see you. In addition, we have installed speed trailers to monitor speed in our four council districts. My colleagues and I are committed to making Carson a place where our families and visitors feel safe and secure. The unhoused population is an issue affecting all cities. Our city was proactive in response to this by introducing an innovative solution with our new public safety engagement team. This team is at the forefront of our efforts to aid the unhoused. Since its inception, the division has achieved remarkable results, including successfully placing 40 unhoused individuals into temporary and permanent housing. This team is to be commended for their hard work and dedication. The money that the city council allocated has been well invested. In 2023, the city council made a decisive move to protect our mobile home park residents by approving a mobile home park overlay district. This commitment from the council and myself ensures that all mobile home park residents have an affordable place to live. Property owners of mobile home parks must now seek a zoning change for redevelopment and must provide comparable and affordable homes. I am committed to preserving Carson's diverse and inclusive housing, making sure that everyone has a place to call home. 2023 was a landmark year for our veterans. I spearheaded a resolution that speaks volumes about our commitment to those that served our nation. This resolution focuses on increasing veterans' housing because I am committed to ensuring that our veterans are a part of a community that truly values and supports them. To the residents of the Carriage Crest Park community, you will soon enjoy a newly transformed park. We have increased this four-acre park to 15 acres. Picture this: new baseball and soccer fields. It will also include a dog park, basketball, and pickleball course, a new concession stand, restrooms, and other amenities. This is all made possible by combining a $13 million state grant with an additional $3 million from our city's general fund. To the community around Forseal Park, your voices have been heard. The transformation you've envisioned is unfolding. We're improving everything, from the shaded picnic areas to the sports field lighting. There will be a new children's playground area, community stage, park marquee signs, and an improved outdoor exercise area. We received a $4.2 million federal grant to make this project a reality. In April of 2023, I made a recommendation, and my colleagues supported it. All youth sports registration fees in the City of Carson are now free. I'd like to thank Farron Capital for their generous donation of $350,000. These funds will be used to purchase youth sports uniforms. I want all of our kids back in our parks. Let's take a moment to celebrate a landmark achievement for Carson. Our city's reserve has hit an all-time high of $222 million. This is a first in our city's 55-year history. Under my leadership and directives to staff, we've fortified Carson's financial backbone like never before. My guiding principle is fairness. It's always been my philosophy that everyone should pay their fair share. I want to refocus on the measures that made this happen. Measure K, the transaction and use tax. Measure R, the utility user tax. Measure C, the all-business tax. And look at the results. Under my leadership and the support of my colleagues, our reserve is at a historic high. It's about building a Carson that not only thrives today, but also in the future. Carson is on the move, and we've got some big wins to share. First up, Lamita Boulevard is getting a makeover thanks to a $2 million grant from Assembly Bill 102. Then there's my green initiative, the Urban Forestry Master Plan. With a $1 million boost from the USDA Forest Service, this grant will allow us to plant trees throughout the city. In addition, we are proud recipients of the Conserving Black Modernism Grant from the National Trust for Historic Preservation. This $150,000 grant will fund the production of a historical structure report for Carson City Hall. This confirms our commitment to conserving our city's rich architectural and cultural legacy. Today, we continue to strengthen our working relationship with Cal State University Dominguez Hills. In 2021, we pledged our commitment to working with each other by starting the Town and Gown Promise, which was followed by the Small Business Growth Academy in 2022. Today, I'm proud to announce that the city council supported my mentorship program initiative by appropriating $100,000 so that students can earn while they learn. Thank you, Dr. Thomas Parham and your staff, for working with me on making these initiatives a reality.
Greetings. I'm Dr. Thomas Parham, president of York California State University Dominguez Hill. You know, CSUDH values and appreciates having partners and champions like Mayor Lula Davis Holmes, my friend, and members of the city council. We appreciate you, all city council members in Carson, and we're proud to call Carson our home. We value the town and gown partnership that has blossomed under the leadership of Mayor Davis Holmes, and we showed what a collaboration between the city and the university can and should be. Our Town and Gown Internship Program gives Toral students the opportunity to contribute directly to city services and departments by working with city staff and administrators on projects and programs that benefit the entire community. The state of the City of Carson is strong, and York California State University Dominguez Hills is proud to be a part of one of your pillars of strength that help to empower and stand up this city.
This year, Carson reached across continents to form a special bond with the city of Acca, Nigeria. It's a big step for us, making Carson global. We're opening new doors, new friendships, better ways of living, and brighter futures. We're excited to see where this journey is going to take us. As we turn our attention to the exciting advancements in our innovation and sustainability projects, we find ourselves at the forefront of an energy revolution right here in the City of Carson. We are proud to unveil several significant renewable solar energy projects in partnership with Prologix and the Clean Power Alliance. Let's hear a few words from Ted Bardaki, CEO of Clean Power Alliance.
So Clean Power Alliance was founded with a mission to rapidly decarbonize the electricity grid here in Southern California, and we're well on our way to pursuing that mission. We were just named the largest green energy provider in the entire United States by the U.S. Department of Energy. First of all, we're using space that is generally not used. It's a way of bringing energy production closer to the customers. And finally, we're able to take that energy and sell that back to customers in Carson at a, at a 20% discount.
We will soon mark the commercial operation of three vital solar installations with a combined capacity of over 3 megawatts. The renewable energy that is produced from these projects will feed electricity directly into our local grid system, reducing transmission losses, minimizing disruptions, and decreasing greenhouse gas. But we're not stopping there. By 2025, there are plans for three additional energy projects to come online. As your mayor, I am thrilled to champion these groundbreaking and important projects. The solar panels are powering our city's journey towards becoming a greener, cleaner, and more resilient city.
This community solar project will not only benefit the residents of Carson by providing clean energy, but also creating high-quality jobs here in the city. We are really excited to be a member of Carson's community as well as contribute to Carson's economic growth.
Last year, I set plans for 20 Tesla superchargers at the Carson Event Center. Since then, there's been a significant shift. These superchargers will now support all makes and models of electric vehicles. Carson is now set to receive the latest supercharger model, the V4, one of the first in California. We've also applied for the Southern California Edison Charge Ready Transport Program, and it is slated to receive four new EV charging stations that would be used to support our future electric bus fleet. We're actively pursuing EV charging projects, and by the end of 2024, we anticipate having approximately 160 EV charging stations to be located at city facilities. These projects are being planned and implemented at little or no cost to the city. Now, let's shift gears to an initiative that is powering our future. I'm talking about two battery storage facilities, one in District 1 and the other in District 4. By balancing electricity supply and demand, these facilities contribute to grid stability and resilience. They can provide additional power during high demand and help prevent blackouts. I want to introduce Kevin Smith, CEO of Orivan, who will share more details about this $350 million investment into the City of Carson.
We're thrilled to partner with the City of Carson and Los Angeles Orange County Building Trades on this project, which will generate significant tax benefits to the city and create competitive wage construction jobs. If approved, we'll break ground next year and will officially contribute to Carson's energy transition when the project is completed in 2026. Thank you to the City of Carson and for your partnership with this effort, and we'll see you in Carson.
I take pride in acknowledging the recent progress in our city's environmental stewardship. In December, the city received the Gold Level Energy Achievement Award through the South Bay Energy and Climate Recognition Program. This reflects our continued commitment to energy conservation, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and embracing renewable energy solutions. I'm proud to share how drones may soon become our eyes in the sky. The city has recently taken a significant step by approving a new policy and guidelines allowing for responsible drone usage within the city. I envision a seamless integration of drones that can enhance city services and improve safety. Carson is not just one, we're evolving, with an important focus on affordable, high-speed internet and digital inclusion. It is crucial to assess our community's needs, identify gaps, and leverage opportunities for enhancing high-speed internet and related infrastructure. That is why we've initiated a comprehensive broadband assessment study. By identifying and addressing these critical factors, we are laying the groundwork for a more connected city. In the coming weeks, the city council will be considering both short- and long-term solutions to address infrastructure challenges and implement policies and programs to support this endeavor. Together, let's build a community where no one is left behind in the digital age. Over the past three years, Carson has truly come together with the support of our local businesses, developers, city leaders, the Economic Development Commission, and community leaders to create our first-ever Economic Development Strategic Plan. Our goal is to create an environment where creativity thrives, businesses prosper, and our entire community benefits. While we were nominated as one of the top five most business-friendly cities, my goal is for Carson to win the top prize. my goal is for Carson to win the top prize. In July of 2023, we took a significant step forward to improve city services. We hired TransTech to staff the city's Building and Safety Division. By adding TransTech's expertise, we are activating our vision to streamline Carson, a program to ensure that our city's development moves at the speed of our ambition. This efficiency is reflected in real numbers. For example, building and safety services has seen a significant reduction in the amount of time it takes to review plans. In just over two months, TransTech has issued 314 permits and reviewed 164 plans. Thank you, Councilman Rojas, for recommending this change. As we plan for a prosperous future, let's recognize the backbone of our local economy, our small businesses. Through the City of Carson Small Business Grant Program, fueled by the American Rescue Plan Act, we were able to extend a helping hand to those hit hardest by the pandemic. We allocated $1.5 million to support 66 small businesses with grants ranging from $5,000 to $25,000 to aid in their recovery. We're determined to see every small business in Carson survive and thrive. Today, I'm thrilled to showcase the latest chapters in our city's story. We transformed the Avalon Church site into 30 condos. We're also proud to introduce the Anastasi, a 50-unit multifamily housing development which will redefine what it means to live in luxury. Another new development will be the Carson Place, a luxury residential development consisting of 764 multifamily units. It will include 10,000 square feet of restaurants and over 111,000 square feet of open space. These projects would not be possible without developers wanting to invest in Carson.
People always ask us, "Why Carson?" for the several projects that we're building. And our roots as a company started on one of the projects in Carson 15 years ago. And what we felt back then when we did that project was support of the community, support of the City Council, planning commissions, support of staff. And that's where real change can be effective. So when we came to Carson, we knew that the alignment of values between all these different people that were determining the future of the city were on the same page. And that's what drew us here, to invest here, to put our time and energy here, and to plant our roots as a company here in Carson. Because we believe as far as all of Southern California goes, the future of Carson shines the brightest.
This year, let's pledge to not only dream of a better tomorrow, but to build it with our own hands. Together, we are unstoppable. The state of the city is strong, and with your help, it will grow stronger. Here's to our city, to our journey, and to a brighter future. Thank you, and God bless the city and the people of Carson.
Well, good evening, everyone. We're reconvening to open session. Madam City Returning, report on closed session items, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Council did not take up item number two, which was a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 to discuss labor negotiations. The Council conferred under Government Code Section 54959, sorry, 54956.9D2 or D3 and E1 because there is a significant exposure to litigation in two cases. No reportable action was taken. The Council did not take up item number four. The Council met in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91 to confer with legal counsel in the existing litigation matter of Watson Land Company versus City of Carson, case number 19STCP01720. No reportable action was taken. The Council conferred with legal counsel pursuant to the same code section in the matter of Paul versus City of Carson Workers' Comp Appeal Board, case number ADJ15416145. No reportable action was taken. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to go down for presentations. Our, see my Captain Gil Smith is here. If you could start making your way to the podium. Captain Jones will not be here tonight, so we're going to skip item number seven. He's not here tonight. So if my colleagues will join me down front, please. My Captain, my Captain. How are you?
How are you?
I'm here. We are here to honor one of our founding fathers, one of historians here in the city of Carson, and it's none other than, I call him my Captain, Gilbert D. Smith, who was born on May 9, 1934, and was raised in Los Angeles. He has lived in Carson, the Carson area, for over 50 years. He is married to a wonderful little baby doll, Shirley Smith. And they have three sons, one daughter, five grandchildren, and six great-grandchildren. You a great grand, you a great Papa? Gil was the first president of the Citizens Committee to Incorporate the City of Carson and has served as a founding member of the City Council for 13 years he served. He was the mayor of Carson from 1970 to '71 and 1974 to '75. And he has served as interim, while I was working. He was the interim city manager in 1998. But on May 9, this legend, our founding father, turned 90 years old. I should say 90 years young. His memory is sharp. And he's just slowing down in his walk. But when you want to know something about the city of Carson, you must contact Jim Gil Smith because he knows it all. He's wrote a little book about it, I believe. Am I correct? He gave me a copy of it. And everything that you want to know about the city of Carson and its incorporation is logged right here between this young man's two ears. And I just want to say how much I appreciate Gil for all that he's done for the city of Carson, for being that sounding board to us young elected, well, I'm not that young, but elected officials when they are campaigning. When I decided to run in 2007, I wanted the blessing of one person first, and that was Gil Smith. Gil and Shirley Smith came and said, "We have you." They have been supportive of me ever since I ran. And I know my other colleagues on the City Council has reached out to him also. So Gil, what we want to say to you is happy, happy 90th birthday. My Mayor Protemoree this plaque to you. But it is great to have you here with us today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Smith, before I reach your plaque, may you live as long as you want, may you not want as long as you live. Gilbert Smith, to the visionary founder of our beloved city, your pioneering spirit and dedication have shaped our community for generations to come. Here's to celebrating your remarkable legacy and the countless lives you have touched for the last 90 years. Wishing you joy, health, and continued inspiration on this special day presented this 22nd day of May 2024 by the Mayor, City Council, and the citizens of Carson, California.
You want to have a few words, Captain? We know you want to have a few words. Mayor Protem has the mic.
I've just been asked to say something. And I know you don't want to be here all night. But I want to, first of all, thank you for both the recognition as well as your commitment to serving the citizens of Carson and the surrounding community. It has truly been a fantastic opportunity and blessing to be involved with the citizens of our community. This evening, my wife, Mrs. Glenda, Glenda. Mrs. Shirley Smith. She's joined with me this evening in our celebration of well over 60 years now. We actually started the incorporation effort prior to the time that we had the chance to vote for incorporation. And many changes in our community, but all of them have been a blessing, a challenge also to, in order to try and meet the needs of our dynamic community. But first of all, maybe second of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to meet with you this evening. If there is any opportunity or occasion when you would like to invite us back again, as our mayor has indicated, Mayor Lula, will be right at your front door. Last of all, let me just say thank you very much and ask my wife if she has anything she would like to say. You know what happens is that families get committed to serving the community. And you should not forget that because sometimes the elected individual or appointed individual will forget. But sitting in the same hall, maybe your wife, your daughter, your wife, in any case, thank you for the invitation. And let me give my wife an opportunity to say.
Come on, Shirley.
Say two words.
90 years is a good, long time. And Gil has given his heart and soul to this community. And we're just grateful, really, that we finally reached this place where we can look back with so much joy. There have been so many wonderful, glorious moments. It's just been pretty amazing that we've been able to cover so much ground. But, you know, life goes on. This city continues to prosper and to grow. And we're thankful, so grateful, that it continues to thrive.
Shirley, Shirley, come on, why don't you take a picture? So on the count of three, let's sing "Happy Birthday" to Gil. Okay, one, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Gil. Happy birthday to you. And many more. From our grateful council and our grateful city, thank you for all your years of service. And we want to bring you back next year and the year after. We're going to celebrate his birthday every year. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Of Carson.
Could I bring our city attorney down and all of the attorneys? Oh, there you are. And do we have more of your attorneys here tonight? Come on down. So Tony, Pam Lee. Recently, the city was victorious, this city and five other cities. And I just wanted, the City Council wanted to congratulate our city attorneys for all the hard work that they did in making this a reality. When other cities said no and they wouldn't, five cities joined in a lawsuit against SB 9, which would allow local control. The state was trying to take our local control as regards to housing and all that and change our land use and zoning here in the city of Carson. But this victory of SB 9 strengthens our city's autonomy and governance. We appreciate your dedication and your service and your hard work. And when we said, others said, no, five cities joined in a lawsuit. What five cities was Carson? Redondo Beach.
Del Mar.
Del Mar. Whittier. And Torrance. We said, no, we want to keep control of our strength. We didn't want to give it away and have people coming in and moving and changing your single-family residence. residence into duplexes, you're taking a house and turning it into a duplex, am I correct? Or a fourplex, a fourplex. We were victorious. The other cities now calling to say, well, what did you do? Can I talk to you? No. And they can't have our attorney because they've been trying to steal our attorneys. But when we said, let's roll up our sleeves and fight, that's what they did. They said, okay, okay. People didn't think we were going to beat the state with this issue, but we did. It's going to be under appeal. But the fact is, we need to maintain local control. Because when our residents come and say, why are you doing this and why are you doing that? If you don't have local control, we're just sitting here shuffling paper. So I want to thank these two and the entire Alshon Wynder firm for all that you did in making this a success and making us this, really, I call it the jewel of the South Bay. The jewel of the South Bay will go to war and fight. And this is an example. When others said, no, you can't beat them, yes, we can. But you got to be willing to fight, okay? So we have, this one is for Sunny. You have the other three? Oh, you have them? Sunny Sal Tani, Carson City Attorney, managing partner of Alshon Wynder. Recognizing your outstanding victory in the landmark case against California Senate Bill nine, which has preserved the autonomy and integrity of local governments. Your efforts have not only preserved the rights and interests of our community, but also has set a precedent for municipal law. We extend our deepest appreciation for you and your tireless commitment to ensuring, enduring the impact presented this twenty-second day of May twenty twenty-four, signed by the mayor of the city council and all the citizens of Carson. And we want to thank you so very much because we are a contract city and a charter city. And if with this victory, the five of us have control. I know they're going to appeal it. But right now, we're victorious. Sunny. Pam, Sunny.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to thank the council for believing in us and allowing us to proceed with this lawsuit. I think when Carson decided that we're not going to allow the state to set these laws that essentially eliminate single-family residential zone, that's what SB nine does. Anybody can go without any local authority and subdivide their home into fourplexes and then put an ADU in the back and create density. There is no accountability for public safety issues. And other cities were so afraid of the state that they really just didn't want to get involved. And once Carson stepped up to the plate and this council said, let's do it, there were other brave cities that got involved. So thank you for allowing us to protect our constitution. This is well beyond just local powers. This case protects the constitution and how laws are made. The state has gone a little crazy recently, and they're just passing laws without following constitutional mandates that preserve local agencies' rights. So for us, you know, the attorney general saying, ah, we'll go fix the loophole and we'll pass another law. And our attitude is, great, do it right, because you're violating the constitution. So this is a great victory for all cities. But I wish I could take a lot of credit for this. I may have just come up with a little bit of strategy and pulled the coalition together. This lady standing over here is the person who drafted all of the briefs, who argued the case before the court. And Shukan standing behind her is the person that did all of the research and helped. And Shukan was a first-year associate. And I said, you like con law, Shukan? He said, yes, I do. I said, welcome to the madness. And we dragged him into this case. And Michelle Villarreal is not here, who was also great support for Pam. I just want to, I'm talking a lot, but I have to give you this anecdote. Because during oral argument, Pam, there's this great transcript that every attorney wants to see their partner have. The judge asked a simple question, and Pam just stood there very calmly and said, well, these laws, blah, 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 like seven laws she cited, you know, have this narrowly tailored issue, and I won't get into the legalities. But then the judge turns around to the attorney general and says, well, what about what Ms. Lee just said? And, you know, how do you address that? Do you know any other laws that don't do what she says? And he looks at him and he says, um, this is not my area of expertise. And we're like, yes, it's not your area of expertise. But the judge said, Ms. Lee just impressively just cited all these laws. And so Pam, thank you for doing such a stellar job on this case. Shukan, thank you for all the help. The credit goes to them and them only. Thank you.
I would like to emphasize the fact that Carson was one of the first cities. And if not for the fearless leadership of Madam Mayor here and the rest of this council, we would not have this lawsuit, or it would not be of the magnitude that it is. And so with their leadership and their forefront thinking about the community and really looking after the community's needs, because basically this is what it boils down to. Either the state is going to dictate what we're going to do, or you, as the community members, are going to dictate what you're going to do. You need to be able to respond to your community, and these leaders have.
The next we have proclamation recognizing May as Stroke Awareness Month. Ms. Gentry, are you here? I think last week, we celebrated the twentieth anniversary of our Stroke, Joseph P. O'Neill and Mary Ann O'Neill Stroke Center. There's only two stroke centers in California. We happen to have one. And we're just proud of the fact that we are always at the forefront of programs for our residents. And I always say we take care of our children and our youth and everything in between. That's what it's about. This is a resident city. We're about people and serving. And I'll say it, we serve the people we love, and we love the people we serve. And that's our Carson residents. And the Joseph P. O'Neill Stroke Center is something that we're quite proud of. I'm going to ask Councilman Hicks to read this. He is one of our participants in the Stroke Center. And he just wants to be a testimony to how good the services are at our Stroke Center. Mrs. Gentry, I've been ever, but she just came and said how much the Stroke Center has meant to her. Oh, I'm saying everything.
Continue on. You on a roll, continue on. Continue on. Well, who we have before is Balthazar Villa Pando. He is a Carson resident for over thirty-seven years and a devoted husband for thirty-seven years, who proudly boasts of his two daughters and two grandsons. Despite facing strokes in both twenty oh nine and twenty fourteen, he resiliently joined the Joseph B. Junior and Mary Ann O'Neill Stroke Center in twenty fourteen and has been an active participant ever since. Balthazar's favorite hobbies is gardening, and he has even assisted with the gardening class for the Stroke Center. He loves for gardening is also evident all the time that he spends cultivating at the Stephen M. Middle School Gardening Community Garden, showcasing his passion for nurturing life both in and out of his home. Again, thank you for being here, and I'm so glad the center was here to assist in helping that you here is assisting those that are in the center.
Thank you. You can stay right here, stay right here. You want to say something? Okay. Give her the mic.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, thank you for allowing me to attend this Carson City Council meeting this evening. To the esteemed Mayor Lula Davis Holmes, my friend, to the council members and all of you here tonight, I honor the Stroke Center because it was very beneficial to my husband. And this since this is Stroke Center, Stroke Awareness Month, I stand before you because I know some of you may agree, if the Lord has done something for you, you need to say thank you, or you need to share it with someone. Well, this evening, it has seemed so befitting to have been given the opportunity to express my sincere gratitude for the Joseph B. Junior and Mary Ann O'Neill Stroke Center here in the city of Carson. I had the privilege of meeting Mrs. O'Neill on several occasions. A woman dedicated to her husband was evident as a testament of what we now have the benefit as we see here today in the city of Carson. I will never forget the day Curtis Story, who was also one of the participants of the Stroke Center, along with one of my church members who came to my home to encourage my husband Roy to come to the Stroke Center. And it goes without saying, it's been a life-changing experience for the both of us. In their memory and all of those who are no longer with us, they will always forever remain in our hearts. I would like to thank the city of Carson for having such an important, life-changing community resource center available to support us. Thank you for so freely giving of yourselves, goes far beyond my comprehension. It made a difference to us as well as those who participated in the program, much needed and much appreciated. And I have so much respect, so much love, and so much admiration for all of you who will continue to give of yourselves. When I attended the reunion of the Stroke Center luncheon, I was so excited and overwhelmed seeing so many of you who hadn't seen in a long time. It brought back so many memories. It filled my heart with so much joy, filled my eyes with tears, tears I couldn't hide, I couldn't hardly contain myself, especially when I think about all the love, all of the support, all of the words of encouragement, all of the hugs, a shoulder to lean on, the Bennett fits my husband had, having the access to come to physical therapy and occupational therapy. Roy would be so excited, I could hear him now saying, are we going to the Stroke Center today? He knew it provided him with a comfortable, loving environment to express himself, surrounded by those he could relate to, meant a lot to both of us. We made new friends as caregivers, we did too. We shared our life's experiences. It gave all of us a chance to be there for one another, to encourage one another, to be close to one another. Oh, I can't forget chair volleyball. Oh, yes, I remember making the mistake of standing up. I will never do that again. I used to wrap my ankles around the legs of the chair so I wouldn't forget. In closing, I thank you, I thank you, I thank you, I thank you so very, very much. And as I said at the reunion luncheon, an expression of love, and as I present this to the Joseph B. Junior and Mary O'Neill Stroke Center, an expression of love, a poem that I wrote that's in my first, my very first book that I wrote. And Danny had asked me, and Mel had asked me if I could, they could take this poem that I wrote and hang it in the Stroke Center. So I leave you with that poem, all of you that weren't there. This is the poem, and I know that it was so much love that I received from the Stroke Center, and I will never forget. And sometimes I hope to come back and volunteer to encourage those that are still here in honor of my husband and Curtis and those who have since gone. You may not remember me, but I remember you. An expression of love, a fond caress, a tender smile makes life worthwhile. It's like the sunshine after an evening rain. It's like the star's beauty and brightness that forever remains. When an expression of love is truly given, it's sent down to us straight from heaven. And when it blossoms and reaches its full bloom, hatred and animosity has no room. An expression of love doesn't find fault in everything you do, it simply responds by saying, I love you. Now might I add just one more thing? An expression of love doesn't cost a thing. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'm going to take the group photo, and then I'm going to have the Stroke Center staff to come down. Danny Cook is here, right after this photo. I see somebody crying back there again. Oh, let me read this proclamation first before we do that. I'm not going to read the, I think we don't need to read the entire proclamation, but it's a proclamation recognizes May twenty twenty-four as Awareness Month. And it just comes with our heartfelt wishes on a great program that's just, I think we've received several awards for the Strokes, if I'm not mistaken. And like she said, it costs nothing. So on behalf of the entire city council, the ninety-eight thousand residents here in the city of Carson, the mayor and the city council do hereby proclaim May twenty twenty-four as Stroke Awareness Month and encourage everyone to become aware of the symptoms of stroke and seek immediate attention when observing a loved one, coworker, or individual with symptom. It's dated today, the twenty-second of May. It's signed by your mayor, Lula Davis Holmes, by Mayor Pro Tem Jawan Hilton, Councilman Cedric Hicks, Councilman Jim Dear, Councilwoman Arlene B. Rojas, and attested to by our city clerk, Claire Bradshaw, Dr. Claire Bradshaw. Thank you. I'm going to take this photo, and then I'd like all the staff to come down for a photo, okay? Come on, staff. Danny Cook, Bobby. Director Whitaker. Who is she? Come on. Come stand right here, sweetie. Right here, in between councilmen. All in. Danny Cook. Thank you. This is for you, Danny, for the staff, that's the poem. Thank you so much for that beautiful poem. Thank you for coming, okay? And let's give our Stroke Center a round of applause because, like I said before, and we did have a proclamation recognized in May twenty-two as Arbor Day in the city of Carson. We don't have a recipient here today, but today is the twenty, what does it say? We don't, we don't have it. My Public Works Director. Arbor Day, Arbor Day. Come on down. Let's talk about these trees you planted and cutting all over the city. It's our Arbor Day. Thank you. This is our director of Public Works, Arlington Rogers. And yeah, you cleaned it real good. You were? Well, we want to publicly thank you. I know it's Arbor Day, but he's done a phenomenal job in our city. You've seen our streets being repaved, our trees trimmed, our sidewalks. He's done. So we will give you that recognition. I don't know what happened. Oh, here it is? Okay. Oh, thank you, thank you. We'll take a photo. Thank you. I'm going to let our director, you want to read just a little of this, just a little bit. Skip over some of them.
All right. Okay, whereas the first Arbor Day was celebrated in eighteen seventy-two in Nebraska as a special day for planting trees and has grown to the thousands of celebrations in the communities across our nation each year. Just as trees are becoming to blossom for spring, Arbor Day highlights the importance of trees in our community. Arbor Day is a time when we encourage tree planting in our neighborhoods and teach our children the value trees have in our lives. Trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Trees help slow climate change, foster biodiversity, improve our communities, and provide a stronger and provide a stronger future for everyone. The city of Carson was awarded 2021 Tree City USA by Arbor Day Foundation for our committed to urban forestry and builds pride among our residents. Now therefore, the mayor and the City Council of the city of Carson do hereby proclaim May 22, 2024 as Arbor Day in the city of Carson and encourage the entire community to observe Arbor Day by planting a tree, supporting efforts to protect our trees and forestry, thus leaving a legacy for present and future generations. And we thank you for all you do to beautify our city with all your trees. Thank you so much.
And when you take down a tree, we replace it with another tree, right? Thank you. Mr. Superintendent? All right.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members. The Public Works Department is actively planting trees unregulately. We replace, as you just heard the mayor say, whenever a tree was removed, we do replace that tree. We are actively ensuring that we do plant trees because they're an important quality of life concern, and that's one of the things that we strive for in the Department of Public Works. Your Public Works team works very hard to ensure that we have a nice urban forest. So there's a lot of trees out there that are saplings that we water regularly, and once they grow, you'll have a very nice urban forest.
Thank you, and to our residents that call and wanna take a tree down, please don't do that, just we'll trim it for you, if it's in your yard, trim it. But trees, call you, okay. Call Director Dr. Rogers, please, before you do anything to that tree. I go down blocks and I see trees that have been removed, and it just devalues our property, you know. So please, understand what these trees are for. It makes our city beautiful, and it helps us in other ways. So thank you to the Public Works Department for all that you've done in a year and a week. He's our new director. Thank you. All communications for matters listed on the agenda, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have two comment cards, but both of them are non-agendiatives.
They're non-agendiatives?
That's correct.
Okay, we'll call them up.
Call them up?
Yes.
Okay. Brandy Lewin. Good evening. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Dr. Kalia Bradshaw, thank you for what you do. To our mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, thank you for what you do. And to Sunny and her team, congratulations, thank you for fighting for our city. The poem just read said, you can say anything with love, and I'm saying this with love. I know it's important to recognize each other, but I'm just wondering if we can do a separate something for that? Because we got families and we're here to talk about things on the agenda. So just a concern, and that is coming with love. Okay, so Mayor, I'm here because I appreciate the opportunity to provide you with an update from when I was here last time. I take it very seriously, and I want you to know about our ongoing efforts regarding the facade improvements and the advocacy for a quality grocery store in our city, which I believe that you and the council support. Since our last interaction, our community has shown tremendous support for this initiative. We have gathered close to 250 signatures on our petition, and our discussions on this matter have reached over 10,000 individuals. Additionally, we have assembled a dedicated task force consisting of 15 passionate members who are eager to contribute to our cause. And my father's barbecue just agreed to have a community meeting on Tuesday as well. However, I must express some frustration with the lack of clarity we've encountered in our discussions with key individuals, particularly with Mike, who is the lease manager and I'm speaking over at University and Avalon. Despite our best efforts, obtaining clear and actionable information has proven difficult. Thus, we are now working on clear, actionable steps to respond to this challenge. As we strive to advance this vital cause, I come before you asking for your guidance and support, and asking if there's any suggestions or resources that the council or staff could provide to help us expand our outreach efforts and engage more community members in this endeavor. We are particularly interested in unbiased avenues for involvement that ensure equitable participation from all stakeholders. Additionally, if there are any untapped opportunities or initiatives that the council recommends, we explore. We would greatly appreciate your insights and guidance. As we prepare for our upcoming task force meeting on Tuesday, May 28 at 7:00 PM, your input and support will be invaluable in shaping the direction of our efforts and maximizing, maximizing our impact on behalf of the community. Thank you for your continued dedication to the betterment of our community, and I look forward to your insights and suggestions.
Thank you very much. What I'm gonna do, Brandy, is have our city manager and our city attorney meet with you to see if there's anything we can do, because you're having that town hall meeting. And we are very interested in coming to a solution. You've been running into the same problems that we've been running into with regarding the mall management. So I think together with the community coming out, which I, thank you very much for.
Yes, I appreciate your support.
Yes, and so let's schedule a meeting with our city attorney, our city manager and assistant city manager, see what we as a city can do, and the community to come together as one.
I appreciate that.
Okay?
I'm very grateful, thank you, thank you for your time.
Kim Cortado.
Sunny.
Hi, Kim.
Hello.
You have three minutes.
Thank you, sir, I've been absent, it was down to one car because I got in a car accident, but I have a new car now, so we're good.
Oh, praise God.
Are you okay?
I am okay, yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council staff, Kim Cortado, Parks and Recreation Commissioner. We have, we have four events coming up within the next month. Tomorrow, we have the Memorial Day Tribute, which will be at the Carson Event Center from 6 to 8. On Saturday, June 15, we will be having the Juneteenth Celebration at Mills Park from 11:00 to 6:00. We have Philippine Independence Day on Saturday, June 8 at Veterans Park from 7:30 AM to 6:00 PM. We also have Samoa Heritage Festival, which will be on June 29 from 12 to 7 at Foycilla Park, formerly known as Scott Park. I just wanna say thank you to all council and staff for all the hard work that goes into all the events that we have. I have missed a couple lately, because like I said, I was down, you know, a car. But I'm back, I got a car, I don't have to carpool with my daughter no more, so it's kinda nice. I did wanna mention, you know, congratulations on the 20th anniversary to the Stroke Center. A lot of the stroke survivors do come to lunch five days a week when they're there for their exercise. And chair volleyball was today, like the one person had mentioned about, you know, make sure you sit down. So I make sure that, because they end at 1, so I make sure that I hold food for them so that I know that they're still being able to eat, because we stopped serving lunch at 12:30. But I hold food back specifically for them so that they can come in and have a hot meal. I also have it to where, because they are on a budget as well as seniors, that, you know, because some of them are under 60, that they can do the suggested contribution so that it's not a mandatory $4 when you're under 60. So I have it, you know, worked out with my boss that, you know, stroke survivors can come in and eat like a senior can and do suggested donation. But with that, senior lunches, five days a week at the Carson Event Center, 11:30 to 12:30, that is put on by the YMCA, and thank you and have a great night.
And thank you, and I'm glad you're okay. Next, we have approval of minutes from May 7.
Move approval by the mayor of the minute, so I mean.
Moved and properly second. I catch your vote. Oh, I'm sorry, do you have a card in? Okay, well, we're gonna approve the minutes and then we'll come back to you. Madam City Clerk, report.
The vote is unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Leslie. Yes, so you don't have to wait until the end of the meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Leslie, you have three minutes.
Okay. Good evening to the City Council, Madam Mayor, staff. I'm here this evening basically to address the issue with the SB 9 and the lawsuit itself. I know in early part, I think it was March 6 or early part of March, we were here with a presentation from the, either from planning and the attorney, the city attorney's office. It covered a wide range of things of stating that, that the new zoning in Phase 1 would actually have an impact in imposing on people by taking away the process of CEQA and the Condition Use Permit guidelines and whatnot. And a lot of people was concerned about that. And of course, as, as you know, in the petition, that the city and the cities, they actually file. They filed a petition in regards to showing that there is an impact of the density, the traffic, infrastructure, and as well as health and safety from this particular SB bill. So with that said, we understand that the people are concerned. I've received calls, people asking me, and I'm trying to tell them, I say, well, I don't have information on it. They say, well, what's the status? And what's going on with the lawsuit? And is this particular bill or this ordinance is going to continuously have the impact on us in the community here?
Mr. Leslie, can I interrupt you for just a second?
Sure, sure.
We won that lawsuit.
Okay, that's.
We won that lawsuit. We, it was one of our presentations, we can maintain local control. And so I didn't want you to go on, but we won that lawsuit, it came out of the newspaper, and we gave Sunny and her staff a certificate, a plaque recognizing them for all the hard work.
Okay, good, good, good.
Five cities joining on the lawsuit, we initiated it, and we were victorious.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I got a chance to read the petition, and the petition was well put together, and it did cover a wide range of issues and things of making sure that, that it was a concern that it would, would be an impact to the city. So therefore, I got that, you know, like I said, I missed that, and as a matter of fact, I think I was communicating with one of the personnel on this matter as well there. So again, that, I'm pleased with that.
We are too, and unless, and there will be an appeal, but right now today, we were victorious in our lawsuit.
Could I do this before I get cut off real quick?
You're not gonna get cut off because I interrupted you, so give him 15 more seconds.
Okay, I just wanna say this, I'd be remiss if I didn't also share this too. I got calls and they was telling me about the event that, that Mr. Dear is gonna be engaging with the marriage on the 25th, and when they asked me, did I get an invitation? I said, no, I did not. So with that said, I told them, I say, I don't, I don't go to something that I'm not invited to. And weddings and things of that nature is very personal and very close to families and close friends. So therefore, I shouldn't be there. So I don't use it for political events, or I don't use it for any other type of events. So again, I just wanna let you know, I've been getting calls. I'm not one of the parties on your, on your list for coming to the event itself.
Thank you, Mr. Leslie.
Yeah, so I just, thank you much.
Thank you. All right, thank you for coming out. The consent calendar, items 13 to through 28.
Move the approval of the staff recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Been moved and properly second, would anyone like to pull an item?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Which one hits?
Item 20 and 22.
Anyone else? Here ain't none, we're gonna move the consent calendar with the exceptions of item number 20 and 22. Catch your vote.
Councilmember Dear.
Item number 20, council.
Madam Mayor, it's unanimous. Yeah, I'm sorry, I was waiting on Councilmember Dear.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Item number 20, staff report, item number 20 was pulled by the councilman.
I, both of those are dealing with the bike lanes. Just wanted the residents to know about what we're proposing to do within the city. My other question is regarding the timeline. Keeping in mind, the Olympics are coming, and that we are the host for the velodrome and for the cycling. And I know many of the world cyclists in the past, when we did have the Olympics, they didn't, they did use our bike routes for some training and just riding, and just wanted to make sure we were able to get all that in place.
So I believe that item you're making reference to, Councilman Hicks, is 22, correct?
Yeah, 20 and 22.
20 and 22.
I was surprised it went back to back, but they split.
Yeah, I would say 20 is animal control, that's why I was a little.
Oh.
Is it 20 that you want it pulled also?
Which one?
I apologize, I missed that. I know 22 is the bike lane, but then 20, 20 is the animal control.
No, it was both of them, oh, I'm sorry. It should have been 22 and 23.
22 and 23.
Okay. Correction, item number 20, 2 and 23.
No, I didn't want 20.
Okay, is it possible?
Madam Mayor.
Both dealing with the measure, and the measure of funding.
Yes, sir.
See, item number, which one are we putting back in for approval?
You're putting back 20.
Okay, let's move to approve item number 20.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
Second.
Been moved improperly second, catch your vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, item 20 is a unanimous vote.
So item number 22 and 23 were pulled by the councilman.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. And Councilmember, yes, to answer your question, that is the goal and the idea. Also meeting with Metro to ensure that the bike lanes that we wanna institute and implement are not only ready for, in enough time for LA 28, but our goal was to actually have that beforehand in 2026.
Okay. For the world, for the World Games.
That's correct, that's the goal. But we haven't gotten or received any information to say anything different that LA 28, that those bike lanes wouldn't be met by then. So that, that hasn't really been a, a concern or issue or thought at this point. But again, if something else changes, then we'll definitely bring it back to you all for your information as well as approval if need, if need be. But the idea and goal is to be ready for World Cup.
So we're, we're, once this has been approved, then we go through the process. We're starting to implement this by when, when should we see any movement?
I believe that this, once everything is approved, I think that there is a 90-day window before they start seeing some type of movement from that action. I'll confirm with the Director of Public Works, but I believe that's the, that's the idea.
Okay, and this will be coinciding with us doing our pavement plan? Because I, I don't wanna make sure, I don't want us to put lines down and then we tear it back up again.
Tear it up, right, no, it's supposed to coincide, which is why I was saying, it's supposed to be about a 90-day process when that implementation will begin, because kind of like the dig ones policy, if you will, we don't wanna dig and then turn it around and, you know, already painted prior to with those bike lanes. So we'd kinda like to see that done in a sense simultaneously, that's kinda the idea and goal.
Okay. I move staff recommendation, item 22 and 23.
Second.
Moved and properly second, please catch your vote.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just for clarification, this is a vote for both items 22 and 23, and it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question for staff. There may be a typographical error on page 8. Item number 24 talks about consider a bond release retract map number. Item number twenty-four talks about consider a bond release retract map number seven eight two two six, hundred and seventy-five unit residential condominiums at Carson Landing located at, and it states northwest corner of Victoria Street and Central Avenue. Wouldn't it be the northeast corner?
Uh huh, yes. It would be.
So I think for the record, because this is a public record, we should correct.
Absolutely, no, thank you, Councilmember Dear. If it's, if that is indeed incorrect, then if we can have for the record to note, as Councilmember Dear stated on item twenty-four, that we'll be looking at the, the approval is for
The northeast.
The northeast corner of Victoria Street and Central Avenue versus the northwest.
So the motion, we moved it, but the correction will be to change it on the title, Carson Landing located in the northeast corner of Victoria Street and Central.
Madam Mayor, I read the staff report and the staff report is correct except the
The heading, the title.
The heading is wrong. It's just a typographical error, I'm sure.
Yes. Is that appropriate? We have it in the minutes, Madam Secretary.
The minutes will reflect the recommended change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-nine was continued, right?
Yes.
Item, until the June, until June fourth. Item thirty and to thirty-two are discussion items. Item number thirty. Staff.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So this item is being presented to you to consider the providing direction to staff whether to proceed with preparing a potential November twenty twenty-four ballot measure to amend the city charter and removing the term limits for elected officials in the city of Carson. Currently, the city of Carson currently operates under a city charter that dictates the term limit for city council members. Under section three zero five of the city charter specifies that no person shall serve more than three, four-year terms of office as a member of the city council, twelve-year maximum. A partial term shall count as a full term unless the period is less than two full years, which period would not count as a term. Removing this term limit from the charter would enable council members to serve the city and its constituents for as long as the residents and voters deem appropriate. For your discussion, Madam Mayor.
Yes, any discussion on this? Comments, MPG?
No, Madam Mayor, I just, I think at the same time, I think we should leave this to the voters to. I think it takes the power away from the voters when we have term limits. It severely decreases authority as far as the history of someone, knowing the things that happen, automatically kicks effective lawmakers out. The city is doing an incredible job right now. None of us are at terms, so just give them an opportunity to decide at this moment. None of us are at our max term anyway, so it just gives them an opportunity to decide. And it's something to allow the residents to decide. So, and it does little to minimize. I think the, the city should decide whether or not we should have term limits or not.
Glad you pointed out where none of us are at terms. So, we're not. Any other comments? Dear, none? Any comments?
Well, I believe we have term limits that are called elections. If the voters don't want you to continue as elected official,
They don't vote for you.
They have an opportunity when your term expires to elect someone else. So I'm not a big supporter of term limits. On the other hand, I haven't heard a single resident of the city come to me, maybe has to you, asking to get rid of term limits. So there's no wave of public opinion on this at this point. I'd like to find out what the public opinion is.
Councilman Hicks.
Well, I wasn't a fan of the term limits at the time. And I think when the charter was being drafted, I kinda vocalized about some things that are going on within the charter itself. But I do think it hampers the residents' ability to voice, to voice their concern regarding candidates. So if you don't want that candidate, you have other alternatives versus you just saying that your term limit is up and you don't vote, and you don't run anymore. So I'd like to put that back to the residents so they can make that decision and not for us dictating to them what we're gonna do.
Councilwoman, you have any comments?
I just got here and the people got me here, so let's leave it to them.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. I put this on the agenda for discussion. I wasn't in favor, we want it passed, so now let the voters decide. I'll entertain a motion.
In the actual item, it's gave dates of doing town hall meetings or focus groups. What was that? That was in the body of the agenda to the staff?
Thank, thank you, Councilman. So the staff report really is just to identify a couple of aspects. One, being able to give public information to the, or information to the public so that they understand exactly what is, what the ballot measure is gonna be proposing and giving basically just background information on that. Clearly, nothing to say advocating for or advocating against, just the information as to what the current charter entails. And so, that's the idea, is to just provide information to the, to the public as to what the ballot measure will entail.
Like we did for other ballot measures, just education.
Yes, ma'am. It's just, it's just an educational piece to, to the residents advising as to what the ballot measure is referencing.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, point of clarification from the staff. So this is a direction from the city council to initiate the process of discovery as opposed to directing to put it on the ballot tonight. Or maybe the city attorney could. So if we vote yes on this, are we saying put it on the ballot? Or are we saying the staff should look into what it would take, how much it would cost, get input from the public and so forth?
If you vote yes on this, you're instructing staff to bring back the proper instruments that would send it to the ballot. You already have the information on how much it would cost and all of that in the staff report currently.
Well, I beg to differ with you. It says thirty-two thousand dollars, that's for the preparing the staff report. Not to put it on the ballot, it's gonna cost a lot more money than thirty-two thousand dollars to put it on the ballot.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Councilmember Dear, in regards to the budget impact on this particular item, I did do research with Dean Logan's office, LA County Register Recorder, and that was the information that was provided using the county estimator, which is the recommended tool for my office to use when coming up with a cost for anything that's gonna be on the ballot. While it is an estimate, that is the closest that we can get. That is the only tool that they have. I did speak with members of Dean Logan's team, and that was the advice that they gave to me to determine the cost. There is no line item or box to click for charter changes on the county calculator, the county estimator. So their advice is to treat it as we would a measure, because anything on the ballot, we pay for by the page. So they recommend an estimated page limit of eight, which is what I used, and that is how we came up with that. Now, stranger things have happened, but those are the instructions given by the officials, the LA County, who we collaborate with for the election. So that's the only tool that I could use at this, at this particular time. I'm working with the Finance Director, City Attorney's Office, on any other budget impact that I can provide. But at this juncture, that is all that the county provides.
So my question, maybe the city attorney could enlighten us a little bit. When we've had ballot measures in the past, it's cost a couple hundred thousand dollars. Why only thirty-two thousand when costs are higher now than they were in the past? It's not, it's not logical.
So as, as far as the costs are concerned, that's not a legal issue. So we did ask the city clerk to estimate that and put it in there. That's the city clerk's job to figure out that estimate and so. Is it, perhaps, Madam City Clerk, is it because we have an election and this is just an added measure? Is that what it is?
Yeah, I don't wanna debate the point tonight. I'm just asking a question.
Sure, I think I.
In our experience, we've had ballot measures that cost over two hundred thousand dollars for the taxpayers. And why would it only cost thirty-two thousand?
I think we can, I can answer that, Councilman Dear. So that, based upon Dr. Bradshaw's estimate, that is the proposed cost for the ballot measure. I think what you're speaking to is actually what Councilmember Hicks asked, and that's for the educational pieces that the city would put together to assist to put out. Because there's a cost that's proposed for this measure when, as in essence, when we give the educational piece for survey to residents, it's giving them the information. That's not part of the thirty-two thousand.
It would not be, of course.
No.
So clarification, point of clarification. So the thirty-two thousand is what the, the county is estimated they would charge the city of Carson to print the ballot with the ballot measure and mail it out to all their voters.
That's correct.
Just adding that to an existing ballot.
To the existing ballot, yes. Thank you, City Manager Roberts. I, I do wanna be very clear that the county has very clearly stated they don't touch charter changes with a ten-foot pole. So I do wanna be very clear with that. They, there are limitations to the advice that they were willing to provide. I did reach out to them several different times. The only thing that they have recommended is that we use this estimate calculator.
Yeah, what does that mean?
No, I mean, they're not gonna give me advice on how much they think it might cost. They're directing me to use the calculator estimate for obvious reasons. If they begin to sort of go with every city and try to give a more accurate cost, they could really kinda start to. Yes, so that, that was their advice. So I'm in constant communication with the leadership there. That was the tool that they advised me to use. They said as, as the language gets developed, if we get more accurate page numbers, I can call them back with more information. But at this particular juncture, that was the advice that they provided to me, was to use the calculator on the website. So that is what we will do. I also feel like it's necessary to state that because this is an even-year election and most cities in LA County are participating in the electorate process, the cost is significantly reduced because we divide the cost by every city. So for example, if we do an odd year or a special election, the cost is far more. So that could be a factor as well. But as I've shared with the city attorney team and with the city manager's office and the finance director, myself and my staff, we're, we're on top of this. We're communicating with them regularly. The last thing I wanna do is pull some sort of okey-dokey and say, you know, aha, you know, it's half a million. So I don't wanna do that. I'm working with William and his team as well. So we're staying on top of it as best as we can. But in terms of getting a type of estimate in time for the staff report to provide to Madam Mayor and, and the council, this is what we have. This is the only tool that LA County provides in terms of estimating ballot language, ballot initiatives. So I, I hope that that's helpful.
I think too, Mr. City Manager, that's just the counties. And when we start our educational campaign, you will be bringing back a budget to us as what it will cost, it'll be more than thirty-two thousand.
That, that, right, yes, ma'am.
You have to do a survey and see if what the term limit is.
Yes, ma'am.
And some educational, one, two, three, four educational literature campaign throughout the city.
Whatever, yes, ma'am, whatever you and the county decide.
So that will be coming back to us.
That's, that's correct. This is just requesting your provide to direction if you want us to move forward and proceed with the proposed ballot measure or not. And if you all are in favor of such, then we will do our necessary steps to bring back the information required for you all to know how, what, how many, is it one survey? Is it two surveys? What the educational piece will be like with the consultant bringing that information to you and then you all deciding
Thank you.
the various packages to, to notify your residents.
So this measure should say to proceed with putting it on the ballot, and then you will bring us back all the.
The specifics for the ballot measure, educational pieces. Yes.
Okay, so in my determining how I'm gonna vote on this, I wanna know this fact. If we vote yes on this tonight, will it then be on the ballot? Is that, is this the deciding vote to put it on the ballot? Because there are some deadlines involved and statutory deadlines, you know?
The resolution will come back to the council and you get a chance to vote, exactly.
Okay, very good. Okay, that makes sense, yeah. Okay, thank you very much for answering those questions. Clarifying that is really important.
Okay, so there's, did you make a motion?
No, there was no, I know some people started voting already, but there was not a motion or a second. So I'm gonna clear the vote just for clarity purposes.
So the motion is to, no, we hadn't voted, we unvoted.
No, she said to entertain a motion.
I said I'd entertain, I thought he did.
Oh.
Second.
Oh, apologies, I didn't hear that. My apologies, Councilman Hicks.
I had made the motion to provide with direction with the staff and I just included the educational piece. And I'd ask the question, that'll be, that'll be brought back.
Okay.
Okay.
It's been moved and probably second. Cast your vote.
Now you can vote. You did.
Oh, me?
Now you voted.
Thank you, Councilman Hicks. And Madam Mayor, the vote is unanimous.
Thank you. Item number thirty-one. Staff, consider introducing ordinance number twenty-four two four three.
Apologies, thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. Yes, item number thirty-one is consider introducing ordinance number twenty-four dash two four zero three. And this will be presented to council regarding an amended section of thirty-three oh one as in addition to the animal control ordinance of Chapter Three, Found Regulations. It will be presented by our staff, Director of the Community Services Director, Mr. Michael Whitaker, for any questions or concerns. But it's for your discussion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim and council members, elected officials. This is a bit of a cleanup item in regards to our dogs on the park and our roos on dogs in the park. Over the past few years, we have seen a huge influx in dogs that are attending the park facilities. We are restating some of the previous information in regards to this particular Carson Municipal Code. The city has historically prohibited all dogs, except for service animals, at its park pursuant to city's policy against discrimination and harassment in Carson Municipal Code, section two one one zero zero dash two one one zero one. To provide clarity, staff is requesting that the city council approve ordinance number two four dash two four zero three. It would modify Carson Municipal Code, section three three zero one, such that the general prohibition on dogs in city parks is restated. I wanna make sure we understand what that means. That means no dogs in the park at any time. In addition to that, the exceptions for dogs that are service animals as defined in the American Disability Act, which are for guide dogs, service dogs, and also signal dogs, as such terms are defined in section fifty-four point one of the California Civil Code. And dogs approved by the Community Services Director for teaching uses are reaffirmed. Even with those dogs that are utilizing the parks that are approved by those provisions, they still have to keep their dogs leased in the parks at all times. Additionally, with the city's plan to develop dog parks in the city also, we wanna make sure that there's an understanding that we will have parks, dog parks and parking lots near those dog parks. And so we wanna make sure that we don't have people walking their dogs from the main park through the actual park facility to the dog park. We will have a dog park that is going to be near, I'm sorry, a parking lot that will be near the dog park. So the dog would be authorized to go directly from that parking lot into the dog parks and lead the exact way that they came, so that we still can restate what we said before. There are no dogs that are allowed in the city parks. So in saying that, the ordinance would make it clear that residents shall be required to comply with all the requirements of Carson Municipal Code thirty-three zero one when accessing or leaving the dog park. Residents will be required to use the new parking lot that will be immediately adjacent to the dog park to access this space, rather than walking their dog across the park in order to reach our dog parks. And so this is, like I said before, this is just a cleanup to make sure that as we build new dog parks in the city, that we have this in place ahead of time. So that there's an understanding that the dogs are not allowed in the parks because we now have a dog park. They are allowed in the dog parks only. They are allowed in the dog parks only.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I know, I'd just like to help in cleanup this. I'd, uh, like to make a motion, uh, to take the following, where am I at here? Some, uh, uh, is this, um, number thirty-one? Introduce the first reading by title only. And with full reading, waive ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-four oh three entitled an ordinance of the city council and the city council of Carson, California, amending section three, three, zero, one, addition to animal control ordinance of chapter three, pound regulation of article three, public safety of the Carson Municipal Code to clarify and update the restriction against entry of dogs in public parks and the requirements for leashing of dogs that are expected from the general prohibition against entry exhibit number one.
Second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, because we're going to be building, uh, dog parks specifically for, uh, the pets. Uh, I, I personally love dogs and, um, uh, they really need to be able to run and, and, you know, en- enjoy their life too, like we do. So I, uh, um, I'm going to vote for this, uh, measure because we are going to have dog parks available to the members of the public in Carson. And I think, uh, this, uh, cleans up our ordinances. Sometimes ordinances are pretty old and, uh, need to be updated. But this, uh, this one makes sense tonight. Thank you.
It's been moved and properly second. Catch your vote.
Madam Mayor, the vote is unanimous.
Item number thirty-one. Item number thirty-two is consideration of local and uncontested appointees to the commission's committees and boards. Is everyone okay?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I do want to also mention, uh, um, the chairperson of the UN Relations Commission is Tina Keely, and she's still in rehab. Just want people to know that. And, uh, our prayers, uh, go out to Tina Keely for her, uh, recovery. And the, uh, uh, commission is giving her, uh, excused absences so she doesn't fall under the attendance, uh, obligation. Thank you.
We're keeping Tina in our prayers. Uh, I know we've sent, I don't know, we've sent her, we did send her a floral arrangement. Uh, could we send her a thank you card or something? The city, your city staff and families thinking about you and keeping you in our prayers. Anyone else have anything to add? Oh, youth commission staff. What do we come up with? We vacated all the youth commissioners and we're supposed to have a list?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yes, the entire youth commission was vacated, um, at the request, uh, made in the last meeting with the exception of Councilmember Deere's appointee, Miguel Domingo. Um, as we sort of stated in the last meeting as well, the expiration of this term is June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Council may consider making an appointee, making appointments after that.
June thirtieth?
Otherwise, we would make appointments and then they, they would serve for a month.
No, they served until removed.
Okay.
So if we have appointees, I'd like to get them started. When is the youth, have we passed the youth commission? I mean, the youth, uh, conference? We've already had that. Did we?
Yeah, there, there's actually two opportunities within the year. Uh, I believe one is in June. Director Whitaker, if you want to confirm that date for us.
Two, two separate days, right?
Uh, that date is June the twenty-first.
Okay, I still think we should proceed with appointing our youth commissioners. They serve until removed or reappointed. So if you have a list of kids, I have a couple of people that have, uh, sent in applications. But I've sent them all to you, Director Whitaker.
That would be great. I, I would, I would hope that we can, um, put them on as quickly as possible. It would allow us to work with them and train them because they would all be new.
Yes. So you don't have a list of kids that want to serve from twelve parks already? Even if we did two per park?
Yes, we did provide that list, uh, for you. Um, we have a list of, I believe it's fifteen, uh, teenagers that would like to be part of the, uh, youth commission.
Did you give that list to who?
Ginger.
Ooh. Do you have that list with you?
I can get that for you.
Madam Mayor, could you ask them to give it to all five of us?
Yes.
Because we all have appointments.
The, everyone had vacated theirs except
Except me.
And then we all was going to allow them.
Mine's expiring anyway.
Okay, we four were going to allow them to select our commissioners.
Right.
So whatever the, whatever names they have, those are the ones I want to appoint tonight, except yours.
Correct. And mine would remain in position and work with the new ones.
Well, that's the only one we did not vacate because you wanted to speak to that person or whatever.
Be one with, with more experience.
Call it what you like.
Madam Mayor?
Yours is the one been showing up too, hasn't it? Yes.
Since we're waiting, I did want to let, uh, Councilwoman Rojas know that we did make contact with Joretta. And so she's listed as pending. So she's been, um, communicated with and she can come in and take her oath when,
Okay.
when she'd like.
So while we're waiting on, um, our director on the environmental commission, I'd like to remove Nadine Ward from an active member. Vacate her provision out, one or two, uh, that's on the environmental commission. And, and then also I had some concern about the public works commission. Did we find out that I heard they were not meeting regularly because they didn't have a quorum? That was news to me at the last meeting.
I hadn't heard that, Madam Mayor. Uh, we can double check.
Please double check.
Yeah.
And find out who's not going so we can move them also.
True.
Make a recommendation, yes.
I did speak with staff from the public works, uh, department who informed me they were having an issue with quorum. And I reminded them that they are able to communicate directly with them, remind them of the absence policy and can vacate as needed in order to fill.
Yeah. The ZET Commission was meeting, it was very active, so something is going on. So Director Rogers and his staff, whoever's not, has not been showing up. My appointee, I want to know who has not been showing up. Uh, and I think my colleagues wants to know also because those, that's an important commission, uh...
Yeah, I need to know.
I wanted to meet with them and give them a little assignment.
Yeah, put somebody else there.
Okay, so Director Rogers, could he circle the, oh, there he is.
Wasn't too far away.
Madam Mayor, I hear you correct, you removed Nadine Gil's ward?
Yes, she's for health reasons, she can't make the meetings.
Yeah. Uh, uh, because she hasn't been attending, yeah.
Madam Mayor, I'm sending the list to, uh, everyone on the desk right now.
Uh, send it to, read the names, all but fill every position except the one that's appointed by, uh, Councilwoman and Councilman Deere. So just read off, how many commissioners are there? Please, twelve for youth? Uh-huh, is it fifteen?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I think it is fifteen, but there's also alternates if I'm not mistaken.
Well, then fill all fifte-, uh, fill twelve, thirteen of the, uh, regular positions and the, the other two that you have, make them alternates because Councilwoman Monroe has and Councilman Deere's commissioners are staying.
Would you like me to read the list now?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir. So the city clerk, or you can give her the list after you read them.
Who do? Liv Williams, Christopher Redway, Skylar Martinez, Jasidi Mitchell, Kayla Hamna, Juan Estrada, Leah Macias, Ki Mia Hornsby, Joshua Moore, Zoe Smith, Hannah Mitchell, Iriana Catchings.
That thirteen?
That's twelve so far.
Yeah.
Louis Colson.
That's the regular positions right there with Councilman Deere's and Councilwoman Rojas, so that'll be fifteen.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I, I vacated at the request of council each appointee except for Councilmember Deere's. So Councilmember Rojas's was vacated as well.
That is true.
Oh, okay, I thought she said, okay, I'm fine.
And there are, the entire commission is fourteen. There's one person on there, which is, uh, Miguel Domingo, Councilmember Deere's. So there are thirteen vacancies.
Okay, so we have thirteen vacancies.
Ten regular, three alternate. That's avai-, that's what's available.
Okay.
And for the last five names that I have, there are fifteen, uh, recommendations for those last five, four of them are from Veterans Park, so we'll just choose one. And that'll be our thirteen.
Okay.
I'll send the list to our city clerk.
Thank you. So, um, the motion is to appoint the names that were read by our director
Second the motion, Madam Mayor.
Youth commissions and to remove Nadine Gil's ward from the environmental commission.
Second.
Moved and probably second, please catch your vote.
Madam Mayor, the vote is unanimous. I'd also, um, I can work with Mr. Whitaker on getting contact information for them because each of them will need to receive a packet in the mail. We're happy to email them as well. I know they're younger, so we could do it.
Okay.
Okay, perfect, thank you, Councilman Hicks.
And that's for all of our commissions, uh, I've been asking if we have, uh, commissions that have not been able to meet because of, of quorum, we need to replace. So to all the staff that's chairs' commissions, I know some are very active and some are not. How's our public safety commission doing?
Madam Mayor, it's, it is meeting. Uh, there hasn't been any issues that I, we've been made aware of.
I haven't heard any.
No. And then, uh, Dr. Rogers is here to give an update on the public works commission.
Yeah, I want to update on the public works. I was informed that they were not able to meet for lack of a quorum.
That was, uh, previous two months. This month, we did have a quorum and we did meet. We tend to meet pretty regularly though. But the previous two months, we did not have a quorum.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is item number, that, uh, did you report the vote, Madam?
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
The next is a second reading of an ordinance number twenty-four, twenty-four, ten. Let the move staffs recommend, uh, what are we doing?
Second.
That's all I'm gonna do.
Yeah, the second reading, you don't have to read it again.
That was quick.
Uh, catch your vote.
She has to clear it. Okay, Madam Holmes. Waiting on your vote.
Vote again?
It's unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item number thirty-three is memorial adjournments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I received one name, John Marcelin.
Does anyone want to add? Well, Council, MPG.
I want to add two people tonight. I want to ask, uh, add Pastor Victor Lewis. Also want to add, uh, Aaron Bryant, who happens to be, uh, our, uh, Finance Director, William Jefferson's stepdad tonight.
Sorry to hear about that, Director. And so, anyone else? That's it? Pastor, bishop, doctor?
Yes, ma'am, uh, let's bow our heads. Father, tonight, we do thank you. We pray that you would bless these bereaved families. We pray that you will comfort them and strengthen them. And we pray that you would give them peace. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. All communi-, uh, council, uh, requests to add agenda, future agenda items.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know if it's an agenda item, but to bring back something to address graffiti. I mean, what are we doing with graffiti? Um, I know the tagging season has begun and they are all over the city. I know we've brought this back before, but I think we kind of alluded to it. We had the tracking system and that whole process. We need to revisit, how can we bring that back and put that implementation? Because, um, we have a problem going on right now.
A big problem. Okay, we'll, uh, do an update for staff on that. Um, all communications, council members?
Yes.
Just want to send a prayer out to our commissioner, Tom King. His wife, Joanne Wright, she was actually visiting one of the residents from the, um, mobile home park and slipped and fell and broke her pelvis in three places. So she's at the rehab center, I forgot the name of it on Vermont.
Who's that?
Tom King.
That's right.
Tom King, his wife.
Tom King's wife.
Wife, his wife. Just, just want to keep her in your prayers.
She fell, didn't she?
She fell and broke her pelvis in three places.
Yes.
Broke her pelvis, that's terrible.
Hmm, okay. Keep her in our prayers. Anyone else?
Uh, Madam, uh...
We came back from ICSC conference.
I'm sorry, are you finished?
Well, I'm trying to make sure, but go right ahead, Jim.
Okay, I'd like to give my oral report on the, uh, ICSC, which is International Conference of Shopping Centers, commonly called the, uh, developer slash retailer development, um, conference. It takes place every year in Las Vegas, California. And, uh, my colleagues join me at, at this conference. So I just want to, uh, let the public know that we attended, or I attended, and they'll speak for themselves. Um, I have been attending that conference for twenty-five years, so I know a lot of people there. And I'm, I'm walking down the aisle, I keep running into people. It takes a long time to get through, uh, just one aisle, actually, sometimes. But it was a very worthwhile endeavor. The city of Carson had a wonderful booth. And, um, my, uh, praise goes to Priscilla and, um, um, who else? Mr. Roberts, Priscilla and Chris Palmer, I think, were designed, designed the booth.
Latoya.
And, uh, Latoya Butler helped set the booth up and, uh, made it, uh, even more attractive. So, um, uh, Rita Kolsar was also there helping. And, um, I, I think, you know, when I compared it to the other booths, I looked at the other cities, I always do that. Ours looked really professional and welcoming. And I think that's important because we want the right developers to come to the city of Carson. There are a lot of developers that look at our city and, um, you know, their only interest is making a profit for themselves. We're not interested in developers just to make money here. We're interested in developers that really care about the future of the community and will invest their money to make a beautiful, wonderful city, uh, in the future, not just, um, to turn, turn over a fast buck, so to speak. So, um, that conference has thousands and thousands of attendees. And the opportunities are great for us to have a booth next year. I, I recommend we do a booth next year as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, I think we missed one of the key thank yous, uh, to the Lulu girls that presentation that you guys did. Uh, the video was awesome. It was awesome and... Uh, the entire booth to the staff, uh, the young lady, who's that? Did the decorate all the flowers and the trees and all that?
And that was Priscilla.
Priscilla, awesome job. The entire, we had so many people coming by. Uh, Tariq, your staff, awesome job. Uh, to, City Attorney was there. Uh, Chris Beck was there. There's a lot of promotion for the city of Carson at the event. And we, I don't know, we received a lot of positive feedback and was able to get quite a few, uh, cards of, uh, people stopping by with some interest, showing interest. But of all the cities that were there, they may have had a larger booth, but ours was the best. So I just want to say thank you to all the staff. Mr. Lennox was there, Sahid, JR, for walking me around. And it was just a good event. It was the best, uh, one that I've had and the, the most, it was a lot of us... Yes, it was a, a nice event, so thank you. My colleagues, uh, they'll have something to say, uh, uh, Councilwoman, MPG. Because we were all there, we were, Carson was in the house, just to say it that way. But, yes.
So my husband does these, um, booths for his company all the time at trade shows. So I sent him a video of the booth and he sends me, and he's like, whoa, this is a hundred thousand dollar booth. So I checked with the city manager, which is like significantly, like a tenth of that. And I'm like, no, they said it's this. And he's like, there's no way. And he's like, who put this booth together? I want them to come work in my company. This is amazing. The video alone, he was like, that's, that's a fifteen thousand, twenty thousand dollar video right there. So I, I know I'm a nobody, but it was an incredible booth. It looked so amazing. The video looked so professional, all of it. And so I just wanted you to know outsiders thought it's a hundred thousand dollar booth.
Well, you're not getting a hundred thousand Lulu girls. Well, you're not getting a hundred thousand Lulu Girls, okay? But it was for now, I just wanted to say publicly, it was awesome. The video presentation, by far, no one's able to touch that. And the sign that was up, and it was just great. So I don't know what you're gonna do next year, Councilwoman.
Oh, they could. Yes, that was the first time for me, and it was great. And just to be together with our team, it showed that we all work together. So I want to thank staff for putting it all together. Yes, the video, all of that was great. I liked that it was like a speed dating for developers and growing your city. So congratulations to the team. We have a lot of second dates this week, and yes, so a lot of potential, and so great job to everyone. MPT?
Yes, I concur with my council colleague that we had so much movement, so many people talking about Carson, so many people wanted to stop and see what's happening in Carson. It's incredible, and I'll just take this opportunity to give my, um, talk to all of my residents in Carson who will be driving up Turmont tomorrow. There should be some movement on the corner of Turmont and Wiser tomorrow. I expect to see some movement around ten AM, so you should be able to go out your house and see some changes in the neighborhood. And for all of you who have called me, tagged me in the pictures, I know exactly what it is. You should know by now what Turmont and Wiser represents. So there should be some movement on that corner tomorrow. And Nadine Ward, you should be able to look out your window and see some movement on that corner. Those people who have been calling, our city's hands are tied when it comes to personal property, but you should be able to see some movement tomorrow, and we're excited about it.
And we want to let our residents in the street, when you see one yellow flower, don't wait until you see it the way it was.
Yeah.
One little yellow flower.
I was gonna, can, would this be the appropriate time to ask our city attorney that when warrants are gotten on houses or things like that, can we get an open-ended warrant? Because some people, we know, when we get warrants on their homes to do this type of work, that they're not gonna do anything. The last time this was completed was the last time we did it. We need to have an open warrant because this particular property never responds after we do it, and we have to wait another six months to do it, and this becomes an eyesore in our community, and our other residents have to suffer at the hands of this resident not being cooperative. And we have to wait a whole another six months to get another one warrant. So I would like to suggest to see if we can get an open-ended warrant or something to continue to cut until they comply, until they decide to take care of it themselves, or however we choose to do it. And then I would like to ask Public Works to, maybe if we can get another schedule. I got a call from Scottsdale today from a resident going through Scottsdale, and they wanted to know the pavement schedule in Scottsdale, but I told them we would get them that. So if you would send me that, text it to me, and I can text it over to that resident. Kelly Todd, if you're watching tonight, I asked a question for you. So she said that she doesn't live in Scottsdale, but for an advocate of Scottsdale, she wanted to let us know that she was advocating for us as a former resident in Scottsdale.
Madam Mayor?
It's in front of it.
You're talking about Avalon Boulevard?
Yeah.
Because obviously, you can't do Scottsdale.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
One second. JR, I've been asked a question for the meeting and for the Carol Town Track. Do we have a date in mind? If not, we can, don't rush it, just make it happen.
So the water board has asked us to provide them some dates.
Okay.
They were thinking, I don't know if they were thinking that, you were thinking September, or would you rather try to do it during the summer?
September's good.
Okay.
You know, whatever you think is best, whatever the residents want, because you have quite a few people that were there that was interested.
Right, okay. Well, I'll work with you and Ginger and get some possible dates and then get back to them. They can be really flexible.
Okay.
All right?
MPT? Oh, no, Cedric.
Me.
I looked at him and said, MPT.
Yes, you did. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to report out that I did attend Contract Cities out in Indian Wells this past weekend in addition to attending the ICSC Conference. Officially, I'm on the executive board now of Contract Cities.
Is this a first for the City of Carson?
No, this is my second time being on the executive board, but as I wean off of being the chair of the South Bay Cog, I will now be picking up the mantle of being on Contract Cities. So that's my next one. And one of the key things they talked about was, are you a rock star or are you a superhero? Which one are you? The difference between the two, to be a superhero means you save the day. To be a rock star, you make the day. So are you both or one or the other? So that was one of the key things they talked about for elected officials to look at what you represent. Either you're the rock star or you're the superhero.
Can I be both?
You can be both. You can be both.
That'd be sure.
And then ICSC Conference, I've gone, this is my third time attending. To me, this was the largest. It was thousands of people that attended this year, and I saw a lot of familiar faces and looking at a lot of the things that were actually being presented, we already have in our city. It was like redundant, a lot of things that were there, but it was good to talk to new developers and to look at what they're doing in other communities in other states because we need to keep growing and moving our city forward. So I'm glad that all of the colleagues, the mayor, and everyone was there to at least witness and see how it's set up and how it's in place. But I know that it was a long walk, because Sunny likes to walk. She had us to walk up to, then she disappeared on us, and then we found her again. But it was a long process. It was a long process. Then, MPT, we've met every vendor that had some samplings, and we were able to get free sampling along the way. We met a couple of new vendors, but it was cool being out and being with the colleagues and seeing what's going on. As I waited for the mayor and for Arlene.
We walked and we walked and we walked, okay, and we met with developers. So our councilman also went to Contract Cities.
Yes, yes, and thank you and congratulations to Councilman Hicks. He strutted across the aisles bearing our City of Carson flag. And going back to being a rock star, being a rock star city, that's one thing, but every rock star needs a band. And we need some drummers and some trumpet players and bass players. And our city manager is a, he's a drummer. So it's good to see that our City of Carson has a band. We have a team, and we're on our way to being that rock star city with everyone together as a band, so.
Sounds good.
Very nice. It was a great city. Again, congratulations, Cedric Hicks.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Any comments from staff? This guy's awfully quiet tonight. Okay, you guys still tired from yesterday? Aren't you glad we had this meeting today instead of yesterday? Okay, here are no other comments. This meeting is adjourned. Is that all? Is that okay?